I'm gonna call this work session as we break down council order. We all stand and join if you're in line. Last councilman we have to meet is in a.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic of which is founded on one may shot, under God, in the spirit of justice for all.
I know where you called it.
May your vote count?
Here.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lower?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Mr. Burke? Mr. Burke, we're on the zoning appeals.
Yes, sir. First item for council's discussion.
Yes, sir. First item for council's discussion. There are two members of the Board of Zoning Appeals whose terms come to an end June 30, 2022. Those being Andy Cavanis and Richard Lawrence. Mr. Cavanis has indicated he would like consideration of reappointment. Mr. Lawrence has indicated that he has reached the end of his time with the VZA and would suggest seeking another member. So if anyone is aware of anyone interested, please let Mr. Vickers know. We would love to have that name so that we can include it on your June agenda for recommendation for appointment.
What have you thoughts on that before we move on?
I'm not sure what to seek out, so I. Talk to Roger. Didn't we advertise for it last night? Put it on Facebook or something.
We can, we can, we can put that out there. Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Burke. All right, Mr. Burke. Self-service kayak.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Council's request to discuss and consider a proposal from Rent Fund. To secure a franchise, to operate a self-service kayak dispensary at Lake Arrowhead. The proposal would be an upfront cost of $10,000. For a three-year franchise, the town would recover 80% of the rental fees until such time that we've recovered our $10,000 investment. And then after that, we would recover 50% of the rental fees. As a matter of information, we generate about $4,000 per year in canoe kayak rentals. So, and that is only during the season between May and August. So if the kayaks were, these kayaks would be available year-round at the lake. So there is the potential for additional revenue to be realized.
10,000 for four?
Four kayaks, yes, sir.
How many do we have?
I believe we typically have anywhere from two to three depending on their condition.
I like the idea, I like the idea that we let labor employees drag about.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They want to know.
They mentioned here that they would have a local nurse manager that we check it once a week.
Who would handle the on-site?
Who would handle the on-site? I mean, like just say someone had a problem with a kayak that they rented.
My understanding that there'll be an 800 phone number that anyone saying, I rented it and there's nothing in here. They could call them directly. We would effectively not be involved with this franchise. Depending on anywhere from three to a thousand.
When I first read this, it sounded good. I got thinking that this is. Just on the liability? Just on the liability here? When you, when you. If this was, if this was written bicycles, it mentions in there they've even got kiosks that rent like tennis rackets, things like that, or whatever. I just look at, I just look at possible towns' liability and speak of a kayak. As far as some of the dangers that come with it. Do we rent that as a town? Do we rent that as a town? I'm asking a question. I'm asking a question. We're seeing the customer face-to-face coming to rent.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And we see that they get a life jacket. All that that they're wearing on soon, there's some questioning or structure or something. One thing bothers me with this is there's no personal involvement. If someone's intoxicated. Someone's intoxicated, if someone's really, if someone's really not appropriate age. And they have all this, but they do have a cell phone, they do have means to log into the app and get it. I look at the downfall. I look at the downfall of where's the town's liability as well, so it goes out there. Capsizes, drowns on a shitty kayak. And they were actually intoxicated when they rented it. Zero skill level. Zero skill level. There is some skill needed in this versus. Some other kiosks. Some other kiosks. The other thing I thought was. If. The attendants go out there to close down the park, they close down the kayak. There's water. Are we now involved in this? This farmer's farm that we're now on the search is somebody. It's somebody who's right or wrong. Fire department, where? If it's a person-to-person around. That type of measure is. Far more controlled. Far more controlled. I think that someone sees a person. Of course, makes contact if he's renting it. Staff is still there. Staff is still there, that's gonna be returned versus. Versus an unmanned.
It does say it's an effect on risk management. On the liability there. And the liability there.
They said they'd do it. And I had the same discussion. They said they would do a whole harmless and they have $2 million. But I'm just wondering, I mean, it'd be a question for town attorney. How much of our liability can we delegate? Right. And ultimately. Would it come back to us? Would it come back to us if. If there was a problem with the kayak. If there was a problem with the kayak and someone got to be drowned. Or just like Jason mentioned, that's all that same thing. Someone just says I'm not taking it back to the locker.
Again, the town is simply issuing a franchise to this vendor. Then rental is between an individual and the vendor, not with the town.
Intersection by the town and we are.
You're correct. You're correct.
I think, and I mean, Mr. Bocken's not here, but I think we are a business. Well, unless venture, unlike a food truck that comes to a end. If someone got sick in that food truck, yes, we hosted the event, but we were not partners.
It's basically the same. It is a similar relationship, but we can definitely defer to Jason.
We gotta pay them $10,000 if they can't.
We pay an upfront fee of $10,000 and then we recover.
No, then we give revenue back.
No, we get 80% of it back up until we pay off the $10,000. Once the $10,000 paid off, we get 50%.
Is anybody else aware of this?
Not that we're aware of. Not that we're aware of. They indicated a couple of locations, but they're all remote from where we're at.
How much is diverted? Diverted, what's the price for?
I don't believe they identify the specific rate. But I think what they do is. Like most of the, like most of the things on your phone, it's a per minute or per 10 minutes. Charge, so you can keep, if you decline to put it back in the, into the cage. The cage, then you're continuing to accrue charges for that. So that is one of the incentives that if you take it out. If you are intoxicated, you wind up paying a lot more for it.
I'm just wondering what all, what all else made it become involved in that loan kayak. There's no one that is, who rented it? I mean, the company would know. The company would know. But as far as us local. We just know there's an empty kayak there at evening time at sundown. And we don't know who had it. Do we lock the gates and walk away from those? Chief and his men, fire department rescue. Where they have to start some type of search operation or whatever it is. It's different than the bicycle rental and the bikes will be in there the day versus a water. A water. Vessel that's, they're unattended. They're unattended and it's our lake. I don't know. I just, when I look at this. I just, when I look at this, I look at risk versus. It looks like the. It looks like the minimal reward for a higher risk. For a higher risk.
Maybe, but I mean, with the liability waiver, if that pulls up. Currently, you said. Currently, it's very trusted that whomever is bringing it out of our staff. So that's like 100% of that liability, so that stands. I would see only a reduction of liability, maybe sort of increase of risk of not having a screen perhaps. I'd like the idea to be in a service that's provided where people can get more than just three months.
Well, that's what I first thought. That seems to be, but there's.
I just think it's gonna be difficult to.
Have a complete hands-off.
Have a complete hands-off of the.
We have staff on site.
We have staff on site there and there's a problem.
They're gonna go there.
They're gonna go there.
They're gonna ask, again, we have no ability to assist them.
I know with our local canoe. I know with our local canoe. Now, some of those trips with the friends will come in from out of town. It's hands-on, it's hands-on with the life jackets, the safety tips, everything. You go through a plastic or you get on a trip. And the other thing is, they also know if someone's expecting time, they're gonna be back. So if it's an overdue situation, someone is knowing that next something's not right. Can do a shoe-worm reading now. Where this is not managed. Not managed. You would ask, but that's just.
Yeah, at the minimum, I think we should.
Yeah, at the minimum, I think we should give.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How much exposure we need.
How much exposure we need.
They approach us. They approach us.
They approach the town. Now, along, along with this discussion, what we need to bring up to y'all. There was an article in the paper this morning about the. Lack of response for lifeguard seasonal help. We, we at Lake Arrowhead are. We are encountering a very similar. Lack of response. Lack of response and people interested in serving as lifeguards. We have enough to start the season. On the 30th. On the 30th. I'm sorry, the 28th. I'm sorry, the 28th. However. However. We don't have enough to be able to offer kayak rentals and concessions because. We try to have two lifeguards available. And in order to have that. Coverage. Coverage. We won't be able to be offering concessions and canoe kayak rentals. At least to start the season. We're hoping to bring on additional lifeguards as the season goes. One of the other issues that we have is that due to the limited number of lifeguards that we have. Operating under the 29-hour per week cap as far as part-time employees. Right now, we will not have the ability to. Offer Wednesday through Sunday. Lifeguard coverage as we had hoped. We believe we'll be able to start with possibly Thursday through Sunday. At a minimum, we will be doing Friday to Sunday. We hope that we will start with Thursday to Sunday. What we're seeking input from council. Currently, we have signage based on input from. Versa that. When there's no lifeguards, it's a swim at your own risk situation. Does council desire to continue to allow swim at your own risk? Or would you want us to? Install signage that basically said, when there's no lifeguard, there's no swimming in the lake. There's benefits both ways. If we allow individuals to swim at the lake when there is no lifeguard at their own risk. Then you get. You allow visitors to enjoy the facilities throughout the week. The problem with that is that when there's no attended at the beach, there's no rule following. And there's the potential for issues. Again, from versa, the town's coverage, if there is an incident. We are covered regardless of whether there is a lifeguard present or not. It's more an operational decision on the part of the town as to whether we want to allow our visitors. The opportunity to enjoy the lake and the beach without a lifeguard. And that's where. I'd seek input from council tonight.
How many seasonal lifeguards do we have?
Typically, we have six to eight. Right now, I believe we have committed four.
Are we able to extend that out if we had someone that's not a lifeguard?
Well, if we had someone that was an attendant, we could, they could do concession, they could do the. The renting. The renting.
Is that what? Is that what?
Unfortunately, the problem is that whenever our lifeguards. Need to take lunch, need to take a break. To take a break. We need to have a backup for them primarily.
Plus the tent, they have to have a certification.
Yes, our lifeguards all have to have. It's not only a full certification, it's an open water certification. So again, it's. So again, right now, I'm just alerting you and our public that. At least to start with, we won't be, we won't have the hours that we originally had last year. We will try to get to that. But again, from council, it's more, do you want the town to continue to offer swim at your own risk during our non-lifeguarded hours?
Do you want to reopen this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This weekend, we are opening with staff, just no concessions, no kayak rentals. We can cover our normal hours of 10 to 6. Yes, sir. We've done that for the past several years.
I would personally like to continue that because I hate that to have to close it down just strictly for our locals. You know, to have to go to that. And then if that's a big problem, by all means, you know, we can talk to you and then you can talk to them. Hope there'll be that, there's some staff in new places.
And we'll keep you all updated.
That's my opinion. If someone here uses it, my family uses it, I know. My kids will appreciate it. Go there in the week. Especially in summer lakes.
And this did come up with our park staff because this previous weekend, due to the heat wave. It wasn't open, but we had. 62P. Not all in the water, but at least at the beach.
It's hard for us because less than 70 days, they're saying. They're calling them not to go in there. She's just trying to, and also trying to let all these little kids out so that they can make sure they can call the show down.
Are they local folks? Are they local folks?
I didn't, I just had all three count them. I was wondering why you're out there with floaters.
Do we just need to get?
Just, well, just general consensus tonight, if you could. If there's a concern, we can definitely, we don't have the signage right now. The signage we have right now is swim at your own risk. If there is a concern on the part of council and a desire to restrict swimming when there is not a lifeguard. We have to order the signage to make that happen. So, I guess, does council have a concern and should we pursue purchasing of the additional signage?
So right now, it says swim. Right now, it says swim.
Yes, sir. Right now, because of where we've been in the past. When COVID hit, when the state established no swimming on beaches because of COVID concern. We put up a beached closed sign. Following the. The state's reduction in concern and opening of beaches. That's when versa said, put the swim at your own risk sign. So as it is currently signed. Our beach meets the requirement from versa. As well as most every other beach or pool. Public, private pool. Public, private pool in Virginia where. It's marked swim at your own risk. Swim at your own risk not in the lifeguard side, not at their station.
Just a thought. Just a thought. What if, because I know part of the problem is we had large crowds and I know this has to be. The word got out and over a bunch of people.
What if, are we able to have?
Are we able to have an licensed or qualified, unqualified attendant that would even potentially charge an admission fee to a beach with no lifeguard?
Summit your own risk facility.
Where it's creating a strictly, people aren't flooding in. Something that's gonna mess up the liability.
I think, I think we might have more liability if we had.
Well, that's what I'm wanting. They could keep us up and get torn up.
Having someone there that's acting mad.
I hate, I hate the city.
Basically, most of the regulations that are. In Virginia, there is very limited regulation on the part of either Department of Labor or any of the other regulatory agencies. A number of the localities that have beach or other water amenities. Have regulations that basically state that you will have one lifeguard. If you have one lifeguard, you can have an additional, non-certified person. But you have to have the lifeguard there to start. If you have anybody, you have to have someone. And the Red Cross recommends that if you have one, you have two. If there's an individual that the one lifeguard is. Needs assistance to remove from the water or something. Because again, we're primarily dealing with teenagers and it is best to have two there so that they can better respond to any incident should it happen.
I believe Jen said the requirement for the lifeguard certification is that if it is an adult rescue, there have to be two lifeguards present. Which like you said, most of them are teenagers. The physicality of having two certified there for an adult rescue was necessary. But I talked with her briefly this morning as well, Joey, and I think there was a little bit of concern with just having the attendant there. Like we said, that if you have an uncertified attendant, there seems to be greater liability because of a situation occurs, that person is not certified. So that was an additional concern. And we did talk briefly this morning, and I'm sure she won't mind me sharing this, but. You know, we talked a lot about, okay, you know, want to increase our revenues for the lake admissions. Unfortunately, we're not able to do that because of staffing. And it's our job to look at those revenues, but at the same time. The liability is far greater to have folks in there on those days. So at some point, we have to look at the liabilities as well. It's unfortunate we don't have a staff. We don't have a staff, but I think, like you said, I think we have three folks. I believe we've had a fourth person just sign an offer letter. And, you know. Two or three folks. Two or three folks, if one calls off, then there's still only three to have to rotate out. They can't be on the stand, I believe, more than 70 hours, so they would rotate from. It's not understanding. They rotate from the stand to concessions to allow them a little bit of a break from the heat. From the heat. But it's a struggle everywhere, honestly, with seasonal help. With seasonal help, not just.
And unfortunately, I know that one or two of the folks that she has hired already have commitments. Commitments. Other commitments for some weekends and some other times. So I give credit to Jennifer and Morgan. They are hatching together a schedule with the lifeguards that they have to ensure that the weekends, we will be open.
I think continuing to launch the swim at your own risk. But if it gets to be a point where in Jennifer's mind, Jennifer's mind is getting too many people. And appears to be a lot. Appears to be a lot. I mean, I could see, I could see, you know, if you got, if you got a lot there. And no lifeguard. And no lifeguard. It's just, especially if you end up. Poorly kayaks. Poorly kayaks.
Well, the good news is typically on the weekdays, we don't get that high of visitation. And I think that was.
So we staff it heavy as well.
Yes, sir. And. Yes, sir. And. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's where we know that we will see the highest visitation is the weekends.
If this swim at your own risk, if there are hours. If there are hours.
No, it's just if there's no lifeguard present, it's swim at your own risk. It's anytime. It's anytime. Well, when the park is open.
Now, I'm just, I'm just wondering what that window was when we're saying.
It's dusted on. It's dusted on. Yes, sir.
What do we do after 6 o'clock? What do we do after 6 o'clock in the weekend? Does that might leave or? Does that might leave or?
We try, we encourage everybody to leave, but.
Does everybody leave?
I don't, I don't. Don't, I, I. Publicly, I would say yes. Publicly, I would say yes, they all have to leave.
No, okay, so we've agreed to stay with swim at your own risk.
Is it feasible, I mean, while we're talking about i-hacks, what about for drinks and snacks? Is that something that's feasible to get out there?
Not easily at the. Well, we do have, we do have, we do have. I think a soda machine up at the restroom. Far from the. And the concern is, and Brian will be the first one to turn red. The more permanent structures that we put down at the lake. It is. The beach is. The beach is a secondary use of that facility. The primary use is flood control. And the more items that we put in that area. Specifically a. A coke machine or a food vending machine that. That's one more hazard that we have to remove in the event of a flood.
I'm about to put mine desk down. Is he open to that? Is he open to that? They want us to take the electrical. I'll do the real.
Do we have liability on kayak kiosks? Is that something?
Well, we haven't determined where that's going to be placed. So it would not be placed at water's edge. It would be placed further away. Further away, so anyone that is getting a kayak will have to drag it down to the water's edge.
We had a hard, we had a hard time way back when. Black way back when, established with Ado Brown and i-hack. We had a hard time conditions that time. Yeah.
Because of the primary use. Because of the primary use.
Well, it's still a flooding in there. In there, trucks, trucks. The ability, the ability to discharge. They let us do it. They let us do it.
They weren't happy. They weren't happy.
Wouldn't happen now. It wouldn't happen now.
Really?
Oh, really?
Oh, really? Oh, oh, it's something. Eighty, then eighty. Oh, okay. I thought for some reason.
The beach or was. The beach.
All the may, all the may.
Yeah.
Beach was. Beach was. And that was all. And that was all.
Both of them were high hazard, but we took them over in. Established the Lee Pregration Area in the ten, the early eighties, I think.
There's never been a backup reservoir.
They, it was intended to be a water source, a raw water source in town, even plunked it for, plunking it still there. But we never completed the line from there to the actual, the existing location. But it is set up for that. For that. Don't have the line.
So, to finish the discussion.
To finish the discussion, I would like to continue with swim at your own risk.
And so, more day weekend is a chance.
More day weekend, if you have a chance.
Will you baggy ride it?
Will you baggy ride it?
Very heavily used.
Very heavily used.
Right.
Right.
Right, see the living legacies.
Yes, sir, we are at the point that the documents as far as. The plat and deed of gift have been drafted and reviewed by the town attorney. Everything appears to be. Everything appears to be correctly prepared so that council can consider the donation of this property at your June meeting.
Any discussion on that?
Good thing we're doing this.
Nice to meet you, Catherine Parker, like electric.
Yes, sir. Up at your desk, there's a copy, Jennifer's gotten some further information after this request had come in. Basically, the costs to, well. In the past, when we've had events there, we've had to run extension cords through the parking lot for various vendors and equipment. It would be preferred. It would be preferred if we could have a trench constructed. Constructed from the existing electric panel to where a lot of the demand has been, as far as both the bands, as well as placement of a couple of food trucks. So that it would limit the need for ground mounted extension cords. Prick hazards, if you will, in the public area. The cost to. Do the conduit and some of the electrical. Jen's got two proposals, there's a seven thousand dollar cost. In order for us to put in a new two hundred amp service, we would have to work with S V E C to upgrade the transformer. At the existing pole, that adds another seven thousand dollars, so. We do, staff would request council's consideration of this project. This project, it definitely will remove some of the safety concerns when we have events at the. Mechanic, the mechanic, street parking lot, as well as it will allow us to be in a better position to. Work with food vendors that need higher amperage. Electrical service. Electrical service. We don't, this was not funded. So, we would request council's consideration if you would authorize it to approve use of ARPA funding for it.
I understand, so the location pole is great for option one.
Well, yeah, this is the pole with the transformer. This is. This is.
Running down to that.
Correct, it's running to this. Correct, it's running to this panel.
What you're saying, you just put a new panel up.
Well, we would put a second. Well, we would put a second, we would put a second panel.
And then. And then you just reconfigure where vendors come.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Not significantly different, but typically, historically, there's been one or two vendors here and then some back here. And so, if, if with the installation of the second panel, we would be able to have a greater density closer to those facilities and not have a need to run the extension cords.
I guess, point that out, if you go to those events, there's pretty long lines, some of those food vendors, like. Hour and a half line sometimes to get food.
Dave, tell me, Dave, tell me, we don't undeal on these.
We don't, but we have, but S V E C has allowed us to install. Has allowed us to install this panel, as well as put in, if, if, if they, if council approves the second panel.
Do we have, is that written agreement or anything?
We have a written lease. We have a written lease for this property, yes, sir.
Well, I like the idea of making it upgraded so that you can have events. It's a good question.
It is, it is, it really is. Again, if council's amenable to this, we'll include this as an agenda item at your June meeting.
So, we're doing, so we're doing. So, we're doing a total.
Just fourteen thousand. Just fourteen thousand. It, it, it's, it's, it's an option one, option two. Option one, option two. Option, option one includes the upgrade of the transformer and the cost associated with that, as well as extension of a new service line to the panels, as well as the panel. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, the chief was involved in some public urination issues. Thankfully, it wasn't him directly. We've had, unfortunately, we've had a few recent incidents of public urination. That led the town to try and determine how to charge these individuals. The state does not have a public urination. Code. Code. And they recommend. Charging people as. Indecent exposure. Indecent exposure. The problem with that charge is that the indecent exposure. Legislation, the code basically says you have to have intent. To expose yourself. To expose yourself. So, if. So, if. An individual is. Urinating on a wall. Urinating on a wall. It's very hard to. It's very hard to confirm that they were trying to. Expose themselves. Expose themselves, because typically people will walk behind a building. Anyway. Anyway, getting a successful charge is very difficult under the way that the state recommends. Recommends our officers to pursue this. The state does allow localities to adopt their own code specific to urinating in public. And the town attorney has developed this recommended code that if council would consider, would consider, we can include, it does not require a public hearing, it's simply a normal agenda item, free all's consideration.
Most towns and cities do have.
For the reason that the state doesn't really follow through.
It makes it difficult, it makes it difficult if you don't.
Shocked it don't.
Yeah, I'm surprised, I'm surprised that this wasn't done like forty, fifty years ago.
Yeah.
Well, I, well, again, if there's, if council's amenable, we would include this on your June agenda. Yes, sir, this is. Yes, sir, this is simply a continuation of the discussion, if council had any further comments, direction, if there's a desire on the part of the town to consider. Inclusion of skateboarding on the greenway. Or any of, or any of, or expansion of it. Expansion of it, we just wanted, I know council had talked about it and wanted to give you all an opportunity to continue that discussion.
Would you all be amenable to having a vote on it, maybe next meeting as far as part one? Miners are permitted to skateboard on the greenway proper, accompanied by. Under the slow restriction, I understand, like expecting sixteen year olds to be there with their. Guardian. Guardian. Would you all be amenable? Would you all be amenable? Your name's fine. Your name's fine.
I like, I like, I like the whole idea of. Trusting teenagers to do the right thing. Big problem, big problem in being on the loop. Yeah, the greenways for everybody, not just. Yeah, dog stop. Yeah, dog stop. And I have heard, I have heard. How do you get there? I don't like the idea of. I don't like the idea of getting on a straight and straight. You know, even if they want, it's not the ones that we say they can do. Give them a place to go that's not. Give them a place to go that's not.
It's pretty rough. It's pretty rough.
I, I still, I still, I mean, I would have a problem. Number one, I just think it's. Number one, I just think it's, it's, it's a use that is not in. Context with the greenway. Greenway. It opens itself for. Physical context with elderly people. Elderly people and people. Dogs on leashes. Dogs on leashes and that sort of thing. And I think it's going to be an enforcement like that, I just think. Police have to enforce. Based on age. Based on age. If someone, if they see on the greenway. A guardian or a parent. And then verify their age. Verify their age and then I just think that it's going to take a lot of. It's going to take a lot of. I think could be. I think could be. I would not say better use somewhere else. Better use somewhere else, it certainly probably needs to be. Those are my concerns. Those are my concerns.
Just to, just to put a finer point on your, on the thing. So, right now it's up to police discretion, I just like. So, if you, just think from their standpoint, it will be easier. Easier.
They're not allowed, so if they see someone on the greenway with a skateboard now, I mean. Like, there's a problem. Like, there's a problem, they're not allowed. If they see someone on the greenway. They think they might be underage and might not have a parent with them. That would have to be investigated and confirmed. I just think that it's going to take a lot more of the time. A lot more of the time. It's going to be, it's going to be cheap. I mean, I don't want to put you on. I mean, I don't want to put you on.
No, it's, it's easier not to have it. It's easier not to have it than open the door, but. I totally get the juke calling, the juke calling, somebody buying a doll. Over the areas. Over the areas. Is it something, is it something like basis, complaint basis, maybe complaint, but. You know, the longboards. I'd say before the trick board, like we don't have issues down the longboards. But, but, if you drive longboards. It'd be extra work. It'd be extra work, but. The percentage. The percentage. Percentage overwhelming enough that it's worth of net door homework. If we have any skateboard users. I haven't seen any sense of the issue of it. But, I'm not seeing. I think so, all bodies exist, they're coming out now because they're allowed, so obviously that might. I don't know. I don't know. We're doing it by trial basis. By trial basis. Try to see how it goes. Hate to have revisited it here for now, but. See the level of responses and how it reacts. To be honest, since that first, since that first people we job happened. Since that, since we did that. Since we did that post, I haven't heard any, you know, of course, people actually. Maybe, yeah, maybe, yeah. I had a guy, I actually had a tough, I had a guy, a few reasons skateboard transportation, we did a recovery. We had that, we had that, it was electric phone board. Totally. Totally, you had a helmet on which we passed. Totally respectable. That was his transportation. And, see, I really enjoyed my helm, didn't say that way. Still see people at the park. Still see people at the park, did the other day at skate park. We have a skate park. We have a skate park, same miles away in San Juan. We're here for you guys. We're here for you guys. There you go. Yeah. Yeah.
Anybody else have anything?
Anybody else have anything?
I mean, is the question out, is the question out? Do you vote or is the question now? We've got to talk on.
I still like the idea. I still like the idea. Temporary. Trial. Trial of the greenway, on the loop.
You mean, anybody in that, on the loop, is that what you're saying? So, that was kind of the original, that was kind of the original idea, a few parts, right?
I mean, I've heard the things, I've heard the things against that. I think it's worth a shot, I think it's worth a chance of having a chance of being respectful and enjoying it in the way that he wants to enjoy it. They're often just. They're often just before them, other people. Unless they become dangerous, I don't think they should stop immediately.
Do you have to advertise this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We would have to do, it would have to be a public hearing.
Do you want to do it?
I'd have to, I believe so, I don't think we'd be, I don't think we'd be able to meet the. Advertising court. Advertising court.
They did do a poll. It was a scientific, it was a scientific. Majority. Majority. Pretty likely majority said. I was a little surprised. I was a little surprised. Pretty likely. And who knows your. And who knows your. It was against. It was against setting a skateboard. But what's worse. Food information. I don't. I mean, I guess, I guess. I just look at the, the foundation of the green. Why the green was. Why the green was established. And I know that. And I know, I'm changing. I'm not. I'm going to get on so far. I'll get on so far. I just think it's. I just think it's. It's going to interfere with it. I know what you're saying, everyone has a right to the void, but it's going to take away.
I guess I hear more kids. I guess I hear more kids. They care about it.
Well, yeah. I tend to have.
I'm being convinced of people that need, they can use. They can use this month. It's like, we aren't listening and we don't care about it. I know, that's not what I did.
And again, I'm not saying, I'm not facing that on the fact that I think. The skateboarders in general are not responsible. I'm basing the fact, just the nature of operating a skateboard versus the nature of a bicycle, for example. For example, it's just, unless you're, unless you're very skilled at it and some are very skilled at it, but some are not. And it's just harder to avoid a conflict with a pedestrian with a skateboard than it would be.
We allow bicycles. We have people not skilled on bicycles.
And dogs, like, I mean, you know, I would think dogs are probably a bigger risk of being with people. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong, I might be wrong. If I was skateboarding in the greenway, I would be a risk. But.
I don't know, I don't know.
Mostly the trouble we've had, we've had a few dogs aggressive. That's the trouble we've had. That's the trouble we've had is skateboarding. Lurkers and kids hanging with the. Late in the evenings. Late in the evenings. That's what you mean. That's what you mean. Saying, saying. Save the crowd hanging. Keep the crowd hanging. And we have had. It's all done by the skate. We've got benches broken. It's great, but I know the fact, because of the issues with damaged property. While the town initiated. But. I don't, I'm not for. I'm not for. Pretty by rights. Pretty by rights. Small steps. Little steps.
All right, what do you want to do? So, what you're saying. What were your. What were your thoughts?
Well, small steps, like the idea of just, the idea of just. Starting with. Starting with. Opening it up for minors. Opening it up for minors, I'll leave a guard. And that's versus, you know, thirteen year old. Fifteen, nineteen year old buddy. Yeah, I'll watch it. I'll be. And just the idea of. And just the idea of it. Again, my kids. Again, my kids. Assuming one of them. Assuming one of them did, I want my kid to do something that's a constructive hobby and takes them out of the greenway. As of the moment, right now, technically, I'll be working, be organized to do that. My eight year old son. He's on a skateboard and I'm here holding his hand going down. I just, I just. That seems like a reasonable. Versus someone else and I, I don't have a problem with people walking around. Someone else with a, walking down the greenway is allowed, but not with my son on a skateboard with his helmet on.
Here you go, here you go, buddy, oh, yeah, good jobs.
That seems. I don't know, it doesn't seem. I don't know, it doesn't seem working, just to me. I've looked into studies on the matter, but I think it would be good to value that, to create an outlet. I've looked into studies on the matter, but I, I think it would be good to value that, to create an outlet to that. Right now, it's, the skate park wouldn't be a good question about that.
I mean, I guess the street is allowed.
Allowed for that, but.
A lot of streets out.
A lot of streets out to take my, my skate, my practice skateboarding, so.
And frankly, I know this is.
Frankly, I know this is, this is catering to a very small subset of.
Small subset.
A small subset impacted by this one or the other.
But that's what I would like to.
But that's what I would like to.
Very simple.
Very simple.
Put it out there, see if.
Put it out there, see if it, how it goes, it's still gonna be up to officer discretion if they see there's someone causing problems.
Twenty of other reasons they can.
Twenty of other reasons they can.
Pick someone up if they're.
Pick someone up if they're finding some stuff, busting stuff up or doing anything that's out of order, that are being disorderly towards other people.
Lots of laws.
Lots of laws in the book.
I think, I'm not on my.
I'm not on my. But I'm sure.
Joey, would you be open to?
A proposal of.
Proposal of. Instead of just saying minors, which is basically anyone under the age of eighteen.
There's a big difference between a seventeen year old and a seven year old.
There is.
I'm just gonna say this.
I'm just gonna say this, for the years that the greenway's been there.
I have seen.
I have seen a parent, the parents with little kids and skateboards, little scooters, whatever.
And they're just.
And they're just tutting along or whatever.
I haven't seen anyone have.
I haven't seen anyone have a problem, a problem with it. Police aren't worried about the little kid or skateboard.
The public has a problem.
The public has a problem.
Police have a problem.
Police have a problem that there's vandalism or somebody, or somebody zipping at his feet, causing a threat. Somebody, whether that person walking, old, young, whatever, um.
It's the hazard.
It's the hazard.
If the age was.
If the age was.
You know, you know, twelve and under.
Twelve and under.
Or ten and under or something.
Or ten and under or something. I think that covers what, I listened to you say you're wanting to.
To have available, and I agree.
To have available, and I agree, I, I, I like people with kids.
Put them on bed.
Put them on bed, putting along with a skateboard or whatever, little.
Tricicler, whatever they're riding.
You know, but.
Big difference between.
Big difference between, like I said, a seven year old and seventeen year old.
Their skills, the speed.
Their skills, the speed.
What they're doing out there.
What they're doing out there.
So.
I'm just going to add that, because in some ways, what you're talking about has been happening.
It has, I know it has.
And I was, I expressed it so specifically, so detailed that.
We've got to spell it out.
We've got to spell it out.
Don't even have your eye across and never teed you on. What you can and can't do.
What you can and can't do. I see what Ron's saying. I see what Ron's saying, but also worried that if we open this up.
That, hey, that you can.
Hey, that.
The greenway's now open.
Greenway's now open for skateboarders too, that.
It may invite that.
It may invite.
Almost as if our.
Almost as if our greenway is also a skate park. Which you'd ship the demons, the deserts. Those are two different things, so try to find little ground there on.
Our decision then.
Our decision then.
That would work with kids.
That would work with kids, but.
The middle ground.
The middle ground is my mind, on a temporary basis, on a trial basis, see what happens.
I don't know why you're all so.
I don't know why you're all so hesitant.
I'm not, honestly.
I'm not, I want to say I'm not, but I think, I think the council may be rightly is.
Like.
I would personally, I'm more a libertarian, so I would be more inclined to let it be a problem and then solve it, but, um.
So I'm with you, Ron.
I'm with you, Ron, honestly, I, that's where I would go if it came down to it.
I'm thinking steps.
I'm thinking steps, see how, see how. If it goes. Maybe so.
But I also hear both saying, he doesn't want to go that route right now either.
Yeah.
There have been, and I.
There have been, and I'm saying, it's. Like I say, yes. You have guys who. You have guys who. I'm not blaming every skateboarder at all, but it's. So window, and if you open it up, you may do that, and have, I think, a timeframe, you know, a certain time. Skateboard at that time, if people are, you're avoiding the loop or you do it all, you know that that's the area, or designated area.
Planes of the loop.
Planes of the loop, if I want to consider.
Having that, that's like that.
I think of that. I can go for that.
Mr. Mayor, instead of considering a code amendment, which is. Bit of effort.
Bit of effort.
If there was a desire.
If there was a desire, uh.
Counsel could request that staff establish a special event of. The third.
The third.
Saturday in.
Saturday in June.
We have a.
We have a.
Skate, open skate.
Open skate at the loop. From ten AM to, to noon.
No, but, no, but.
We have a large group of people that come here, elderly people that come here from Rapidway, pretty much a weekly base, just enjoy the greenway, it's peaceful. I think it has its own, that's my opinion, I think it has its own.
And, and by just doing a, a one time special event.
And by just doing a, a one time special event for an hour or two.
For.
That would then allow the town to gauge, if there is an interest. If there is an interest, you know, you throw a party and nobody shows up, then we know that there's no reason to, to, to pursue a code amendment. If we throw a party and, and there's a handful or there's a hundred, that at least allows the town to gauge, if there is an interest.
To allow.
To allow skateboarding on, on the trail.
I can look at that.
I can look at that.
So this would be a one time.
So this would be a one time event, yeah.
It'd be a one time event, you know, the town invites you to, yeah, in that way, folks that want to use the trail would know, okay.
You to. Yeah, in that way. This Saturday.
This Saturday, from ten to two, I can expect people to be zipping around, uh, if they choose to.
From ten to two.
Is all on one trail.
There is, but this would.
There is, but this would, again, it would, and it would allow the police department to know that, you know, if I'm riding my, my skateboard still somewhere else on the trail, it's still prohibited.
It would allow the police department to know that.
But it's just a one time event that the town would approve.
The use of skateboards.
The use of skateboards, again.
I, I'm, I'm in the camp that.
I'm in the camp that.
I've not heard.
I've not heard any concern.
Outside of.
Outside of some social media posts.
That there is a need to allow skateboarding on the greenway.
That there is a need to allow skateboarding on the greenway.
And so.
And so.
I, I truly couldn't stand here and tell you.
Couldn't stand here and tell you that there is one, ten or a hundred people, that if, given the opportunity, they would actually.
That there is one, ten or a hundred people. That if, given the opportunity, they would actually. Go and, and.
Go and, and, and use the greenway.
So.
So.
And again, changing the code.
Changing the code to test it is, is challenging, because if, if we do something, then we find out that it's, it creates problems, or it's. It's problematic in any, in any way, then we've got to rescind it.
Rescind it.
Rescind it.
This is.
If this is, if counsel truly wants to gauge, if there is an interest, this would be an opportunity for y'all to, to say, okay, we invite you.
If counsel truly wants to gauge. We invite you.
Come use the loop, this time, this date, this time.
This time. We'll see who shows up.
And we'll see who shows up.
That sounds acceptable, I think. It's a good idea, it's a good idea.
What do you all say? What do you all say? The ring's key is on my.
Twenty twenty two.
I don't know, just see what. Yeah, that's about me.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't know what's. I, I don't know what's gonna.
Well, if my mind, if nobody shows up, then there really isn't a, a need to consider further expansion of, of, of use of skateboards.
And again, if, if.
And again, if, if, if we get inundated, then, okay, there's, there's an interest, so.
I, 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 I recall, I recall correctly, there was a lot of response.
There was way more response than I was. And that was a lot out in defense of work, uh, uh, the skaters. I get that, but I do, I do, I do, I do. Population. Population. That's where I kind of look at it. That's where I kind of look at it, um. Responses. Responses. Or to what, each kind of, or the population.
And the responses are.
And the responses are.
Which is the problem with.
Which is the problem with.
Conducting business.
Conducting business based on social media is that the, a lot of the people participating.
Social media. The, a lot of the people. Don't live anywhere near.
Don't live anywhere near.